...law notification and adopt of the agenda. We all stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first off will be student and staff recognitions. A, the students' spring break trips. First, we went to a high school of French students going to France. Go ahead.
Good evening. While they set up, so, spring break wasn't too long ago, although it feels like it was a while ago. But Natalia Delott was able to take some very lucky students to France. They had a great opportunity to stay with families in the, and attend a little bit of school, I think, as well, right? They stopped off at the school and a lot of sightseeing as well, a lot of good food is what I saw as well. So, they've got some photos and things that they'd like to share. You want extended?
I was excited to do what I saw there.
So, girls, did you see any yellow jackets?
Yes.
You did?
I did.
Yeah, I did in Lyon. I saw them, not in Paris though.
Not in Paris? Avoid the unrest and protesting. And what did you see?
So, it was just basically just a bunch of people. They were just changing stuff and like they were singing mainly and like
Singing?
Yeah, they were singing. And so, we pretty much like when I was walking by them, we got through before anything went like turned violent or anything. But it was just, yeah, a big group of people and I mean, there's medical personnel ready to assist with anything and obviously it wasn't like anything as violent as like they said.
And did you have some fresh croissants in the morning? I think it was buttery, slaky?
All right, sorry for technical difficulties. I'm Natalia Delott, I'm the French teacher here at Whitnall and I've been traveling with students since 2005. And this is, this has been four of the biannual trips to France that I take. And I am joined today with my wonderful students Emily and Isabelle that will tell you a little bit about their experiences. But I also wanted to know that it might seem that the 10-day trip is just that, the 10 days. But indeed, it's much more than that because these kids have put all these years and all the days in the classroom to not only learn the language and the culture customs, they also came in every Monday morning this year before school started. So, we can practice, we can learn how to navigate the metro, we can learn that we should not walk barefoot in the French home because that's not the way they do things. So, a lot of little things that went into that, they did it. So, I want to give them first the word to, and before that, they also hosted a French student, both of them. Not all of the students did, but these two have chosen to host a student, French students during the summer. And I want to give them a word to say, first of all, why did they choose to go to France? And how hosting a student helped you to, to do better or be more prepared for this trip?
I can start, yeah. So, I, my family travels a lot to begin with, so I was already kind of well-versed in travel. But I never traveled alone and that was one of the main decisions that are like factors that I took in when I wanted to take this trip because I knew I was gonna be alone for 10 days, obviously with Madame. But I was gonna be alone and I was gonna be traveling on my own and I had to like make sure I had my passport and everything. And I wanted to have that skill with me as well as I really, I was really looking forward to the host day. I had, I'd hosted a student previously, I'd actually hosted a student, two different students. And I wanted to do that, I wanted to go to another place, I wanted to stay somewhere else in France and experience their life, kind of like they experienced ours. And hosting a host student really, I think, made it a little bit easier for the host family's day because I have, I had experienced like what kind of we, what we did and took them doing around Milwaukee area in order to kind of show them the area, show them what we walk, what like everything was, what we liked to do. And I kind of picked up some things like how to like just be involved and even if they're just watching TV or they're just like sitting around playing a game, like always to try and, as much as I could, be out with the family. And I kind of took that as I went over, yeah.
I think like Isabelle said too, for me, it was experiencing something on my own and not with my family. And with college coming up too, just seeing like if I can like survive like just short little time on myself and then helping me gauge like how far do I want to go for college and stuff. And I definitely feel like it was a nice experience to do that and experience a different culture. And with hosting a student, I feel like it was, helped me because then I know like I was on the other side at one point. So, I know how like my family may have felt, like they may have been nervous because I know I was nervous when I was picking up my French student, my freshman summer to host. And I just know that the difficulties was just getting to know people. But I thought it went really well and transitioning and having hosted before, I think it went really well. And I enjoyed getting to know my family and being in the French culture for that.
All right, thank you. I also wanted to note that I've been host to me, we are joined today by Nick right there. Wave and say hi. He was in my first trip to France in 2013. He was the first, kind of like the guinea pig of Whitnall that went on the first French trip with me. And he pretty much has experienced the same thing, you know, the host day, the family. That was one of the major decisions that I took when I was in a different school was to, I tried to do a couple, just the conventional trips where you just go on the, you know, you get in bus and you tour guide. And I realized that students do not get really exposed to culture, they do not get to use their language at all. So, when I switched to this, I saw an immense progress and immense motivation and just a comprehension of what it is like to be in a different culture. So, I'm gonna run you through real quick what happened. So, here's us during the trip and we were lucky to have a especially known pilot David Spitz's father who flew us from Chicago to Newark. And here's, here's us in the airport and in this picture, it's 36, 36 hours they've traveled. 36 hours and this is all right off the train in Lyon. So, we flew to Newark, to Paris, and then they took this high-speed train to Lyon. And look how excited they are after 36 hours.
You said Dave Palaquet was the pilot that take you guys with them?
Yes, yes, he, as soon as Tess found out that we're flying United from Newark to, and he's like, "My dad is gonna try to fly us."
I gotta sit in, I gotta sit in like the cockpit area.
Yes, you got a picture.
Let me sit in the cockpit area, I got a picture.
And it's a little bit darker in the picture, the left-hand bottom corner here. You will see that there, it's a train station meeting area where the French host families are meeting the American students. So, they just right now, they're from two different sides and they all kind of staring at each other. This is Lyon, just to give you an idea where we were, like everybody knows where Paris obviously is. Most people do, so it's like here in France, Lyon, train, I think, two, two and a half, two-ish speed fast train goes south, kind of like here, close to the mountain area. So, it's a very beautiful historical city that has Roman ruins and just about any kind of type of architecture that you could imagine. So, here's family stays, here's Emily with her host family and this is the picture that she chose, escargots. Tell us what you did with your family.
Okay, so with my family, the first day, they sort of showed me around Lyon and just gave me like a brief tour. Like they obviously knew I was very tired, so they respected that and let me like, you know, get to bed right away that night. But then the next few days, like especially Sunday, was a family day. So, that was spent all day with family and it was also, we went to the neighbor's house and we had a big like, it wasn't like a barbecue, they called it, but I'm calling it a barbecue. And all the neighbors got together and I got to experience what it's like to like have your neighbors and communicate with them. And then I also going to school, I was very nervous the first day, let me tell you that. Because I didn't know how it would end up being and stuff. But just seeing the differences between American school and French school, I thought was really cool. And how they communicate with their teachers and I got to experience a lot of different classes. And I went with some of her friends too when her classes were pulled to other classes, so I thought that was very cool. And I did try escargots, which I thought were good, so I'd have them again.
So, the next one is Madison. Madison was, it was her first time flying. So, she said I was a baby, I don't remember. And she probably had the most blast, her host sister did boxing, so she brought her to boxing class with her until they part. The next one is Isabel.
So, my host family, the first night we got in was like a, it was Friday night. We had been traveling for like 48 hours. We were very tired, but they, they had, we had dinner with the family and they, they wanted to hear my English. I was like, "Great, yes, English." And so, I introduced myself in English and then I tried to get them to introduce themselves in English. It didn't go too well, they, they ended up introducing themselves in English to me a little bit later so I could hear their English. But then, over the weekend, it was mostly spent with me, my host sister, one of her friends who knew English better than her. The mom just kind of let us go off during the day. We would always take the public transportation, the bus, the train or the metro, all of that to like the inner-city more. And then we would, one day we went like shopping and went to see all the sights. And the other day, another day we went to the museum. And then every night, we would almost always eat dinner around the table with them. I don't, I don't think they always did that, but I think they tried to do that for me. And then on Monday, we ended up going to school. And on Monday, we started school like the normal school time for Whitnall. And I only had like a couple of classes and I found it really interesting that their lunch was two hours long. And they, they were only eating in the cafeteria for like 30 minutes and then the next hour and a half, they just spent with their friends and I was like, "That would be so nice." And then, so I was really nervous about the classes because they were all in French and the teachers would talk really fast and I even like almost fell asleep during Spanish class. They were speaking in French and Spanish, I don't take Spanish. And then, then the English teacher, her English teacher was like, "I really want you to present in front of the class in English." And I was like, "Okay, at least it's in English." And it was really fun, she had a lot of good friends and they would all greet me the same way. And they would always, they would always greet me with like, "Hey, how are you?" Like once they found out that I was American. And then the next day, we only had to be at school at like 10:00 or something. So, it was just, it was really weird for me because they started at two different times and then they would end at two different times. But it was all, it was all really fun. She was super nice and I had a really great time and they were, they were all really accommodating, which I found was really nice.
So, and here is Tess with her host sisters that was there, a face mask day. And Tess was so upset that she couldn't come here today, she, she actually wrote something that she wanted you to hear. So, this is Tess in her own words. "Ever since I was 10 years old, I knew I wanted to learn French. My dreams of traveling to France and other French-speaking countries were getting closer and closer to becoming a reality once I began learning the language in sixth grade. I'm not going to lie, but Spanish did not interest or click with me. When I learned that Madame Delott offered a trip to France every other year for high schoolers, I knew I had to take advantage of the opportunity to expand my cultural and language understanding. This trip was better than I imagined. I was a little scared at first at the idea of living with a host family for a few days, but the Fernandez family welcomed me with open arms and gave me an experience I will never forget. By feeding me the traditional French foods, taking me to see the sights of the Rinal region and allowing me to experience a typical day in a French high school really opened my mind to how vast and interesting the world and its cultures are. I had such an incredible time on this trip that I plan to go back to France in the summer of 2020 to see my host family. Learning French has not only allowed me to reach the requirement of taking foreign language in high school, but I have made memories and created relationships that will last me lifetime. The trip to France pushed me out of my comfort zone and even has given me more confidence for spreading my wings when I head off to college this fall. I'm, I'm so thankful for Madame for organizing such an experience, the school district for offering French as a foreign language, my parents for letting me go on the trip, and my host family for giving me once-in-a-lifetime opportunity." So, here's Kat, her best experience was the puppy and The yellow jackets, because I think she was right there.
She was actually in it, yeah.
And she got to experience a little bit of excitement, hands-on excitement. But you can see on the right now, oh, actually, on the left, you can trace of modern French, of old and modern French city of the Basilica, very decorative, very old architecture. And in the corner on the left, you will see the modern district, it was a great place. And the next one was Madison. She survived the whole of that family gathering in the backyard, which is quite common when the weather was nice. And we were so lucky when the weather was nice and it was sunny, we did not have rain a single time. And here is Ritten with her host sister and we see the new town Lyon from the same Basilica that you saw the previous page. And this is Kimmy with her host family. She was so lucky, she was right smack downtown Lyon. And here is Anna with her host family. And here is, here are a couple of people that you, that didn't go on the trip then, but I found it for them. So, this one is Karen, she's a current student at Whitnall, but she's spending time abroad as an international exchange student. This is Abby, so she lives not too far from Lyon. She came on Saturday and we kind of knocked it over together. And this is a graduate, Sam Dorlech, from, she's a junior right now at UW-Madison who's studying art. And she's spending a year abroad through UW-Madison in Axon Palms, which is on the southern part of France right now. She's also to pretend to Lyon and spending the entire day together, we're still not very connected. So, I got my kids all over the world. And this is the last night, we had a WhatsApp Messenger and this is them texting me literally at, you can see 22 times 10:00 PM. So, this is their last thought before they went to bed, the night before they were to leave their host family. And yes, Madison is already planning to get a night coming to Spain if it happens, so they could separate. And then we went to Paris, I'm just gonna quickly run through what we have seen. I had the most, I'm gonna first dim the lights because the picture, I was, I was I had the most com- posing, the best posing and fun group ever, so you'll get to see their silly faces as well. So, there's a lot of, "Let's do this." I didn't, I didn't, they just wanted to be all she. So, here's us by After Triomphe. Unfortunately, we didn't get to get on top of it this time because we needed to have a reservation, they changed the rules. So, and this is a test for you, which statue would they try to replicate? These are all statues on After Triomphe, they tried to, they had to add people. Do you have an answer?
Oh, you're right.
Oh, right, yes. And this is obviously the Louvre. And we were there, I don't know if you followed or knew that it was the 30th anniversary of the pyramid. It was actually, architect is an American who built it and he was there for the celebration. And one of the local French artists who is quite known all over the world was doing an installation on the, in the courtyard of the pyramid, which we didn't see, we saw it being installed. They were, they were rolling something on the, on the, like literally the floor and was like, "What are they doing?" And finally, when we were flying out, we were able to see, it was, it was a really cool from, you had to see it from the top, from bird view. So, here is right in front of Notre Dame that just burned. And this is the point zero that is right in front of it where all the, all the distances from France Start from that point. And this is on the other island, there's two islands and a river in Paris. So, we were on the other island and you can see the, you can see some Titanic pictures everywhere. It's Cass and Kimmy, we're doing the Titanic picture everywhere. This is the courtyard of the Palais Royal, not too far from the Louvre. It'll be nice as usual. We went to Musée d'Orsay and after studying the Impressionism arts in class, they were able to see it in person. And they also experienced a very, very interesting exhibit, it was a temporary exhibit, which was called Lumeaux de Luma, the Black Model, which took all the Black Models and the French and World Art in 19th and 18th century. And the researchers found who they are and showcased them for the people that they are and not just a secondary person in the, in the art piece. And of course, the Eiffel Tower, they got to get all the way on the top and during the night, you can see the city of lights and lit up, lit up. These are all of the other pictures, we went to Cala Combs and you can see those clouds over there. We did, we did all kinds of other things, there was them ordering something in the bakery, Champs-Roi's Day and And you can see, there was March, it was the end of March, there were thirty flowers in Paris. We came back and Wisconsin was like, what was it, like 30?
Yeah.
And then we had a reserve.
We were freezing in Chicago.
And this, I usually do a survey after the trip and this is what the kids wrote. I pretty much took them word for word and put them right there. So, if you wanted to add something to that, how the trip impacted you, what you, what were your main takeaways?
Well, I think the main takeaway is we're just seeing the differences between American and French culture. And I thank Madame for giving us this opportunity to go to France because not a lot of people get to do that. And yeah, I think just seeing all the differences and being immersed in a different culture was very cool.
I mean, I had an amazing time. I was like so happy the entire time. But like some of the major things that I took away was how different the cultures are, yet how much we were able, like me and my host sister were able to relate to each other and talk about certain stuff and like how they watched, like they watched, they were watching, one night, I had a little brother who was 12 at my host family and he was watching an Avenger movie, but it was in French and I'm like, "It's in French." But how similar they all, they really are, even though their culture, their culture has some differences as well as like that you, that I could travel on my own and that it is really important when you do travel somewhere like, somewhere in Europe, that you do be mindful of the different cultural differences that they have. And it is really nice, you should be respectful of that. And I would just like to thank Madame for taking us because she, she put so much effort into this. She was always like trying to get the best tickets for us, trying to get the best flights for us and
Oh, I was not doing the flights, but
Making sure that like we would have the best experience possible and that was really what made it so worthwhile. And I would, I would recommend it to anybody who's on the fence, who is like, "Oh, I'm really nervous about it, like will it, will it really be worth it?" Yes, it will be 100% worth it. It's, it was such a great experience that I would recommend to anybody.
But I also couldn't have done it without you guys. You were probably one of the best and the most cohesive groups that I've taken. You were so supportive of each other, so faithful of each other. When we had some setbacks, like, "Well, somebody had bad shoes," even though Madame said, "Bring comfortable shoes." We were able to work things when things did not, you know, we didn't go on that one thing. Though, well, you just, just picked it up and we go. So, thank you for being a good traveler too.
You said bring comfortable shoes like 20 times.
All right, do you have any questions?
Did you, were you able to speak and understand with your training, with your schooling here? Yep?
Yeah, I, I mean, I didn't, I didn't understand everything, but they talked so much faster than us. So, I would ask them to slow it down and once they started to slow it down or break it up a little bit more, I could always understand that. And they always understood me for the most part, if there were any questions, you would work to figure it out. They were speaking very smoothly.
Yeah, I agree.
But they're also great kids.
Well, that's a reflection on you as well.
Well, that's a reflection on them as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Natalia. Next, I want to welcome Mr. Mike Zenz. He was able to have our band go down to Walt Disney World in Florida. And he's got some great things to share as well about that.
Hello, everybody. So, a trip to Paris is cool, but if you want to talk cultural significance, let me tell you about central Florida. Yeah, so we had a chance to take 47 people down to Florida over spring break. Like, like Natalia, I've been traveling with students since, I think my first trip was in 2004. But this was my first time taking students from Whitnall on a large, out-of-state overnight trip. And having been here for, you know, nearly two years at this point, you get a feeling that you know the students pretty well. But you still kind of hope that, especially since educational travel isn't at this point a super-established part of the instrumental music program. You're hoping that it's going to be a positive experience and it turned out to be a just a wonderful, wonderful experience. So, the students were exceptionally responsible. They handled the freedoms that they, that they got very well. We hit every curfew, we hit every room check and kids were where they were supposed to be when they were supposed to be there. So, the day after spring break, we got to school at 5:00 in the morning. Oh, boy, how exciting is that? So, and then we, you know, after checking their luggage, then we departed for our long bus trip. We did travel by bus, trying to keep things as affordable as possible to try to incentivize as many people participating in the trip as possible. So, Stephen joined, here's Stephen in the red sweater checking bags before we go, making sure no one's sneaking any contraband along on the trip. And then, so Natalia was saying that they traveled for 36 hours and then they were just, you know, right into it. Similar for us, we drove all night, all day, all night, and then we had our performance the very next day. So, this was a pretty cool learning experience because the production quality is really at a, at a professional level. They had professional sound reinforcement, they had professional stage crew, stage managers, everything was like, it was the same that the pros have. And for a lot of the students, that was their first time experiencing something like that. They did have a lot of time with their friends, a lot of time to make some new friends. The, this picture right here, I included this one, this is one of the things that I just love about band trips. So, if you know these four girls, it's not surprising to see the four of them together. But seeing these two guys together, that probably would not have happened. And then seeing this whole group of six together, that probably would not have happened before this trip. So, just the, the chance to spend so much time together, they really got to, got to form some new friendships with some people that they might not have known so well beforehand. And then there's a photo of just about the full group. I think that the only adults in the picture are me and Katie. So, I don't think the rest of the chaperones are in there, but there's all the
I was taking the picture.
Oh, you took the picture, all right. So, there's all the students. So, we had a really great time. As we continue to make this educational travel an expected and a regular part of their experience in, in music, we'll look at some other destinations, look, we'd like to look at eventually sometime down the road, once we've had a chance to do a couple of these, looking at taking them somewhere like an international destination, a more performance tour type thing. But this was a great, a really great first trip. While I have a little bit of time on the agenda, I'm just gonna take another minute, if you'll indulge me, just to share a little bit more about like some other things that have been going on in the band world recently. So, after our, after our trip, last month, we had a chance to host the wind ensemble and the jazz ensemble and a faculty chamber ensemble from UW-Plattville. And we brought the students from the middle school over and they got to listen to the performance as well. The performance went like an hour and 15 minutes, but they kept it going, like they, they kept things moving so quickly that it didn't really feel like that. So, this was a significant experience for a number of reasons. Number one, a lot of the students, the extent of what they hear in music is what they hear in band class or in orchestra class or in choir class. And that's what they think that a band or an orchestra or a choir can sound like. They're not really, you know, aware of like, "Oh, it can be this, it can sound better, it can be more challenging, it can be more complex." So, having a chance to hear these collegiate music major ensembles, that was a really valuable experience. And also, you know, when kids think about careers in music, I think the ones that come to mind quickly are teacher and performer, right? Those are the two quick and easy ones. But these students talked with the Whitnall students about some other career opportunities that are available that maybe they wouldn't even think about, like things like working in music business or music therapy or things like that. So, to continue to open their eyes to other possibilities post-high school. So, here's the jazz ensemble, here's their wind ensemble. And then this funny little collection of instruments that you don't see too often. So, their faculty chamber ensemble was a trumpet player, a horn player, tuba player in the back, a saxophone player and a clarinet player and a percussionist. So, they were outstanding though. So, we had some good conversations about the performances in the day afterward. Then, just last week, we had a chance to work with Professor Scott Tippel, who is Director of Bands and Professor of Music at UW-Madison. He came out for, for a session to work with the symphonic band on some of Gustav Pohl's music. And that was, one, it was very generous of Professor Tippel, he didn't ask for anything. He just came down just to, just to do a little bit of outreach. So, he gave the students some really thoughtful sort of imagery to, things like to further inform their performance and some different things to think about that's gonna help them to perform more musically. So, that was a really great session that we had last week. We did have two students qualify for the WSM Uh, we did have two students qualify for the WSMA State Honors Project. To the best of my knowledge, this is the first time in school history that we've had two students qualify. So Ryan Dudak, he's an 11th grader, he qualified in the percussion section. Ryan is one of eight percussionists from the entire state of Wisconsin to qualify for the State Honors Band. And Samantha Hinkle, who's also a junior, uh, she qualified. And she's one of four euphonium players from the entire state of Wisconsin to qualify. So we're very proud of them and what they've achieved. And then just last Saturday was state solo and ensemble. So we've had three students receive a rating of one, uh, in four events. A one rating, it's sort of the inverse of the rubric stuff that we use here at Whittnall. A one rating is the, the highest rating that a student can earn. So again, Samantha, she earned a one at state on her euphonium solo. Uh, Hee Jong Lee is a, she's a ninth grader, exceptionally hardworking young lady. And she earned a one on her clarinet solo and on her piano solo. And Kayla Okus, Kayla is a senior, and she earned a one on her horn solo. And Kayla, uh, Kayla will actually be going to UW-Whitewater next year, majoring in music. So thanks for giving me that time. I just wanted to share a little bit about some of our student accomplishments in music.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next will be number four, Whittnall High School Student Council Report.
And we just realized, I think this is Olivia's last time on the board. At our next, uh, board meeting where we're slated to talk, we should, if everything goes to plan, have a new student council president.
Alright, I know I've said this before, but it's my last time saying it, so I'll soak it in. Hi, I'm Olivia Hawk, I'm the President of Student Council. Alright, so this week we have teacher appreciation. For each day this week, we're planning on giving all the teachers each a gift in their mailboxes, um, except for the Kleenexes, those mailboxes, so we'll deliver them to their rooms before school. Monday, we have gum, Tuesday Kleenex, Wednesday highlighters and expo markers, Thursday notepads and everything, and Friday, um, a basket of chapstick. And we're also going to come in for school and make breakfast, all around breakfast with coffee. We did that last year, and we had so much food come in, I think we had an excess amount of food. So, um, that went really well, and I hope it goes well this year. It's really fun to do also. And then, um, each student signed up for a couple of teachers, like two to three, to write thank you cards to them, like a personalized note. So, um, yeah, hopefully they will appreciate our appreciation. And then, um, our ideas moving forward for next year, uh, most of these ideas are from our, hopefully our future president, Emma Peterson, from her mind. She's not here with us today, so I'll try my best to, uh, convey those. One of our main, like, issues in student council is the fact that students don't really know what we do. I mean, we do plan the dances and everything, but, um, all the students seem to think that like that's the only thing we do. And then, um, things like the food drive and, um, like fundraising activities, they kind of assume that the administration puts that on, and they don't really consider the student council does that. So, um, one of the questions that we're trying to ask ourselves are like, "Who are we, what do we do, and how do we, um, let the students know that we do these things?" So, um, first things first, within our own student council, we were, um, kind of considering, you know, changing the constitution prior to voting in the May because our attendance is really low because one of the main issues is that we limit the number of members in student council. Um, and I think there is strength in numbers, so if we could take that away and let anyone join, that would be like a good thing to do because to have some students who get in because of like requirements and they don't do anything, um, like we could potentially have students who couldn't get into student council but would actually put in a lot of hard work and, or, um, not even experiencing that. So, um, taking away that member limit could like really benefit us because DECA doesn't have a limit and they have a vast number of people to get things done. And then also, uh, taking from DECA, they do have members in good standing. So like their volunteer hours, um, if you have enough, like if you do enough things in the club, you can get a letter of recommendation from Mr. Rummage. So, um, we were thinking maybe implementing that into student council. And then, um, like I said before, a lot of the students don't really know like the full impact of student council and like what we do. So for next year, Emma was thinking maybe doing more fundraisers and like murals, murals on the wall for classes. And that's something you can physically see and be like, "Oh, student council put that on." And more like, more things like clothes drives and food drives, which we also put on, but just like really buckle down on that. And then, uh, one of the ideas that she had was, um, our recycling program because apparently we have a problem with that where we don't recycle. So we were thinking like student council could be the ones in charge of doing that and actually make a really big change in the school. And then, um, building connections with the students. So again, one of our main issues is like that lack of communication with students, and they don't really know what's going on in the school. So we were thinking, we did this before, we went to Kids Falcon Times and talked to them face-to-face and told them about, I think, the Gims Back Week and, um, the pep rallies and stuff. And we only did that once, but, um, I think it really helped. And so maybe we were thinking that once a week, a student could be assigned to a classroom and they report like what student council is doing. Um, and those face-to-face interactions are like the best way to get ideas across. And, um, that will, like she said, ease the changes at Whittnall. So the students will start to become aware of like everything that's happening. And it won't be much of a shock because, you know, people don't really like change, but once it's gradual, they, I guess, won't really notice that change is happening. So I think that could really help that problem. And it may improve participation within the students if we go face-to-face with them because it has gone down and we really want to like build that back up. And also working with DECA because they're really good at getting the word out. And, uh, to go along with that, DECA has social media accounts. So we're thinking of implementing that into student council also. So having someone, um, maybe who is on DECA as well, um, maybe run the social media accounts, so Instagram, Twitter, and then also doing the newsletter again to let the students know what we're doing. And then, um, just, you know, in general, making sure that everyone is following the constitution and being responsible and participating and really getting their work done. And we're encouraging students to talk during the meetings and, um, tell us what their opinions are. And then, uh, we were, I don't know about this one, but we were thinking about maybe making a fee for the club so that we really know that kids are serious about it. Again, DECA has a fee for the club, I think it's like $30. It's not that much, but if they do pay, we know they won't really slack off and they want to get their money's worth. So that might be a good thing to do. And, um, just a small ideas or suggestion box for kids who don't actually want to speak up could write their ideas down, and, uh, that'd be an easier way to let us know what they're thinking. That's all I have.
What's your membership limited to?
Um, I think there's, um, those, uh-
Yeah, I prefer grade and additional members for seniors who are officers.
Yeah. Mm, so it's not that many.
Yeah, that was a, it was a decision made a couple of years ago before I was a advisor. I guess they voted on it and the kids kind of said at the time, "If it seemed to be a good idea, like, let's kind of cut the back a little bit." Um, but then we run into the issue of, well, you've had kids who have historically been on council, but then new kids who want to join. And, you know, we're, we kind of feel like we're trying to avoid enthusiasm. And that's never something that you want to do. And especially saying to kids, "Well, you can't be here because other kids are here," is kind of weird.
And only seniors, only seniors are allowed to be officers?
No, um, typically it's seniors who are officers, but, um, our current secretary is a junior. Um, our constitution says you have to be on council for two years to be a, to be president. Um, and then one year for the other position. So typically kids wait until they're older, just out of confidence mostly, I would say. This is the first year in a while we actually had a junior who was a part of our 40th year, or maybe executive board position, so.
You just mentioned more seniors because of officers, and so I didn't know how to, how to halfword that.
Five representatives per grade, but then, uh, because there's four executive board positions, typically it's not additional seniors.
So the executive board position doesn't count against the representative position?
Right, yes, yeah.
Gotcha, thanks.
Well, thanks Olivia for your commitment, wonderful. And your presentations this past year have been very good. Most importantly, what happened with Mr. Whittnall?
Mr. Falcon?
Mr. Falcon.
Oh, uh, we didn't have enough guys who wanted to do it. Why didn't you do it?
Yeah.
I wasn't asked.
I, I checked the tape.
Yeah.
I thought you were, actually I think you were asked.
Yeah, my daughter would kill me, she would have killed me.
But she would probably be there.
Yeah, that one, that one went over well. Well, it's too bad. But again, thank you for all your-
Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to number five, action items. A is personnel recommendations or take a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Second, any questions?
The new, new higher science teachers at middle school or high school? It just says science.
Mm-hmm.
High school.
High school.
High school.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So none, motion carries. On to six, discussion future action items. A is math textbook adoption.
That's the way we planned it.
We hear from morals.
Hi.
Brought friends. Blake Bridges could not be here tonight, but Erin Biennic, he is our, um, K-12 content leader and one of our math coaches, and this is Janelle Swick, who is our K-8 math coach. Um, so we're just here to talk about the math textbook adoption for the high school. And we are pretty excited about this because we are in our fourth year, fifth year of Bridges, um, at the K-5 elementary schools. And currently in our third year of adopting CMP as our Connected Math Project, sort of resource for middle school. And so now our high school, which has long been without any kind of cohesive resource for our teachers to really collaborate around and have some common language and common everything, we've settled on a resource that will match nicely with what students have been experiencing as they come up through the grade levels. So what we are requesting is a math text adoption for a program called, just to be very confusing, our middle school is CMP Connected Math Project. And we are asking to adopt CPM, which is College Preparatory Math in high school. So we've been practicing all day to say CPM when we want to say CMP. So just so that we're talking about CPM. And what we'd like to do now is, um, start a roll-up process at the high school as well. Um, like any text, um, adoption, it's, it's not cheap, um, but we have some really rich resources within this program. And what we're looking to do is start with Algebra I and Geometry with those first two texts. And then, if, then next year, then we'll come back to the board and say, "Okay, this is, you know, we're in it now and we're liking it, and we're going with Algebra II and Precalculus resources." So we're just going to kind of do a chunk at a time. We have, um, an extraordinarily big bowl of geometry because if you remember, we reordered the math course progressions. So we now have Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II. So right now, what we're going to face next year is freshmen and sophomores all enrolled in geometry. So we have sort of a big bubble. We have found a way around that because CPM, CM, CPM, CPM offers, um, one-year student ebook licenses that go with the hardcover texts. Um, so we've invested in some one-year licenses just to cover that bubble year. Otherwise, they come with eight-year licenses. So the numbers and facts and figures were all in the, in the packet that you were. Um, the process to get there was really teacher-led. Um, the coaches, you know, did some research and did some things in the background. We were doing the math resource and the math course progression work. And the high school teachers have been, were actually looking at sort of resources for years, literally. So they've done quite a bit of work with CPM. Um, they've also done, um, they had like five other text resources that they were vetting through last year and this year. They took some units, they experimented with kids, they did some lessons out of all these different resources. And then kind of just by process of elimination and meeting with, um, representatives from the companies and saying, you know, "What do you have to offer here?" Um, settled on this one. They also found friends, um, in the form of New Berlin because New Berlin does use CPM as well. And their teachers were saying, you know, "Let us show you how to use it." So our teachers did go over to New Berlin and sit, and sit with those teachers really and say, "How do you like it, what's good, what are the pros, what are the cons?" And so this is where we have landed. They all decided this is the way we'd like to go. Erin has been long part of the roll-up, um, starting with the Bridges. So if you want to fill a little bit of that connection piece between all three resources now, that might be helpful.
Yeah, I don't know, it just kind of turned out that we have sort of a theme that there are really good, so there's textbook companies, right? And then there's companies that, that's all they do is math. They're non, usually nonprofit organizations. So like, um, Bridges is published by the Math Learning Center. So that's all they do is math. Uh, what we use for intervention is through Math Recovery, also a nonprofit. CMP was created by the University of Michigan, so that's what they do is math. Uh, CPM is another nonprofit, that's what they do is math, and that's what they've always done. And, you know, what we found is, um, those companies, although they're completely separate companies, the, the philosophy and the mathematics, um, is always really solid because that's all that they do. So, um, K-5, what we're preparing kids for is they roll into the, um, middle school in terms of constructing the mathematics and it being kind of a, math is a, should be anyway, math instruction should be kind of a social thing. Kids should be learning from each other, they should be learning from a teacher. And, um, CMP continues that, and, um, CPM does as well. I feel like CPM gives us sort of the most options because it's, um, written in a way that doesn't assume that everybody knows all of this stuff right now. But it's written in a way that kind of look, so the geometry text, for example, is written in a way that looks back to algebra. And all there, as the units continue through CPM, there's always this kind of look-back aspect. And, um, so they do a really good, a really good job of that. They do a really good job of writing problems, so kids aren't just solving exercises, but they're solving problems. And we found that to be beneficial in Bridges and also in CMP for middle school.
The nice things about, um, CPM also is that they have a very robust, they've got the hardcover text where you've got, you have the hands-on, you can open the book and you have classroom sets of those. But then there's also a digital ebook, so students can access things digitally as well. Um, there is a homework help resource for students that really, if you're at home and doing things, they've got an online resource that they can actually go to and get some homework help where the, the program will do some prompting for them and help them troubleshoot themselves. Help them to troubleshoot by themselves. And the other part of it that I, well, two parts. One is that CPM offers a really robust professional development program. So once you're in the program, they have free trainings all over the state. So this summer, they've got a couple in Jefferson where teachers can go, no cost. They just go there and they spend a couple of days really with experts in the field who will just help them with understanding what the resources are, instructional sta- strategies around the math practices. And then the last piece that I really liked is that there's a parent resource that parents can also have and go in, and it'll lay out for parents. You know, you might not be used to looking at math problems like this, but here's how you look at it. They'll give parents the answers, kind of give parents the guide to the, the questions that students are trying to problem-solve. So they really seem to sort of cover it from all angles.
The PD then comes back too. So PD, we go out for PD, but then they come to us as well. Spend some time, you know, with teachers in their classrooms in real teaching situations.
With students, yep.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I think it's really important that we kind of continue. This eighth grade class right now has, has really been a product of Bridges, and they've been the product of three years at the middle school of, um, being immersed in these problem-solving situations. And so it's, it's, you know, we don't, we want to do them a, we don't want to do them a disservice by, you know, like as Erin said, sending them in to do a bunch of exercises, you know. And really, we want to focus on the problem-solving, and that's exactly what this curriculum does.
This will be the same bug for like general and honors level classes like for geometry and algebra. And then do these additional roll-up then into the AP level classes like calculus and things like that.
Um, it'll, we'll definitely go as far as pre-cal, and then we'll have to sort of- Um, it'll, we'll definitely go as far as pre calc and then we'll have to sort of come back together and just see if we want to roll that. But once you get to AP, that's, that's going to be its own thing. So if there is AP stuff, CPM does have AP resources that have come up now, but we haven't got that far yet. We really want to kind of immerse in the first two classes.
And the continuity from elementary to middle to high schools there?
Yeah, that's why we really liked it because it really is building on the same premises and the same sets of stuff.
Because we have new math, two years old in the elementary?
This is our fourth year.
Four years.
Yeah.
Wow, it's four years.
Right, so kindergarten, so our current K-1, 2, 3, our current third graders have experienced, yes, Rudolph. So that is an interesting class for me to keep in mind.
So, uh, it's good that you mentioned the continuity thing. I was going to get that too. That, that's the, um, it, it doesn't get into some kind of confusing thing the way the Chicago math, new math, whatever it did that we replaced with Bridges does. Where it teaches kids multiple different ways of unconventional ways of solving some stuff and just ends up confusing it. It's, it's more or less kind of the conventional, um.
Yeah, well, strategy work is a thing. I mean, that's a thing, right? Having, having multiple ways to get to your destination is an important thing, for sure. Um, there are very few curriculums that really align well to our current standards. And CPM is one of two or three that hits all of that on all cylinders. So what we're being asked to do via the standards, this is setting us up to do.
So the number of textbooks that you're, that you're requesting, is that, is that going to allow students that prefer paper to check some out and take them home? Or is the hardcover stuff only going to be for classroom? And if any, any experience kids have at home will just be electronic, because that's not.
Yeah, no, it'll be classroom sets and we'll have a few extras so that kids can check them out, especially the geometry ones, because we'll have kind of a bubble year, so we'll have a few, quite a few extras of those. But we have like a little buffer set where classroom teachers can say you can check them out. Now, if thirty kids all want to check out one book in the same night, that's probably not going to work, but the ebook is set up exactly the same as the hardcover.
There's some people do better with, with tangible paper than a four hundred page PDF document that has, has got no three dimension to it.
Yeah, we'll have that covered. And if we are running short, we're there, we've got more kids that really want the hands-on, we can always come back to it.
Um, we talked about rigor a while back, our math curriculum rigor. How does this new textbook or the textbooks program work into our goals for that?
It totally works into it because part of our lack of rigor has not been being real tight with the standards that we're supposed to be adhering to. So the more we kind of have floated away from not really being tight with those standards as they go through K-12 is kind of how we've landed here. So as Erin said, there's not a lot of textbooks, A, that are very tightly aligned to the standards and to the rigor and the depth that the standards are trying to push us into. Um, and B, we just haven't had any resource at the high school. So this will, not only will it type more tightly aligned to the standards, but it will allow teachers to be able to talk, you know, whether you're algebra or geometry or pre calc. You'll be able to talk with the same language. You'll have the same basic sets of resources. So you will spend less time as teachers now trying to translate, you know, everybody kind of knows what everybody else is doing. But just bringing in that common language just allows everyone to get much deeper, much quicker.
And again, two more. Um, how does this program account for personalization? Um, does it give you strategies for how to handle that?
Yeah, and that's, that's what we liked about it because part of the PD session, when teachers go to the PD or when the PD comes to us, they really do talk about how do you differentiate? There is a group work component where they're asking kids to work together and then what happens when the kids all, you know, separate and work individually, come together? And then how do you allow kids to self-pace a little bit better within those groups? And how do you identify or strategically group them so that some kids that need to work way out here are going to work together and some kids that need a little bit more help work together, help me out here whenever.
Yeah, I was just going to say it really lends itself to the whole workshop model. I mean, it really lends itself well to teachers having, um, having, you know, those, those mini lessons planned. But then that time for conferring with kids and, um, helping move each of their progress meters forward.
And then my quick question is, can you tell me a little bit more about math as a social thing and the whole individual versus group work? Because I know that's a subject that for some parents and some kids, you know, struggle with that, so.
So when I said social event, I didn't mean group work. What I meant by a social event is, um, if, if there's something to be learned mathematically, I would claim that your ideas about it and your ideas about it and my ideas about it are all important. So that, um, we get those ideas on the table and we say, um, does that work? Does that always work? What do you think about that? Talk about strategy. Is that an efficient strategy? Is that something that, um, is worth, you know, writing down and having as a class for something we go to? So I guess I meant by a social event that we kind of construct this stuff together, not that, you know, I'm sitting on a computer just doing math by myself.
And connecting one student's ideas to another student's, which is really important because often, you know, students will work in these silos and not, not understand how they're, how they've represented it visually. Might be the, you know, the algebraic way of how they, another kid represented it. And so that can, by sharing, um, each other's solution strategies, we might be able to build more connections between what students are doing. Um, and push students further along in their thinking.
Did I answer it?
I think so. I can kind of imagine how it looks like in the classroom and how, you know, how that comes together, um, but thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then this will come up at the next meeting for vote. Thank you.
Thanks.
B is Chromebook purchases for 2019, 2020?
Start the third year, um, of the Chromebook purchases. This will allow us to actually give Chromebook in the hands of everybody from K-12. For the first time, we've made a decision in seventeen eighteen to make this move. This is a purchase above fifty thousand dollars. You'd like to board that for board. And.
How the prices look for the previous ones? All the same?
Yes, it is very consistent. So we got, we got a really good feeling for us, um, seventeen eighteen, that bubble. We called out really fast when they did it for Chrome. Yeah, we found out, we both saw it, I had two twenty-five, two fifty, maybe seven.
And how's the durability been on the ones we've had for three years?
Chris, we're not talking about the durability for the ones we've had for, for now.
We had to do this with HPs. Um, they were all under warranty. Um, we sent them back, they were displaced, we don't know. They, they were HP G5s and many HP G6s. Um, we haven't seen a lot of problems with G6s. We're trying a new technology resource advisor. He's a great fix company in Milwaukee here. And they, you know, I called them, asked for some statistics to see what is, for us, Chromebook out there for twenty. Um, that's why we wanted this Acer Now. Acer is also offering some curriculum for our comp test. To teach the kid this computer CBT training, computer-based training, where we'll help the kids, um, when we do have stuff that goes under warranty, go buy the parts. And then the kids will be able to fix the Chromebooks themselves. Uh, real cool technology, these new advisors, keep dog water.
We can see.
They actually build channels into the keyboards. So if you dump water on there, people, the vertical water, it'll help drain it. It's a lot of pencil.
That's awesome.
Did you try it?
No.
Try it with yours first, Quinn, ready?
I don't have one. I don't know. This is good.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks. Anything else, Mike? All right, any other questions? Is there any anecdotal evidence on, uh, on this Acer Now that you're talking about?
Um, just from Technology Resource Advisors that they, they, you know, with, uh.
You know, are there other districts using it or, you know, many?
Green Hill uses it, um, Old Creek.
The same Acer Now?
Yeah.
And, and this is the same, uh, I'm just trying to look at, I think it's all four gig, thirty-two gig, um, machines. Okay, so, because right now, you know, the stuff we have, you know, the, uh, the difficulty of it and the, uh, the, um, service that you get from, uh, from the member or, you know, or the congress. So, um, so this will be a little bit of an experiment, but if you're sure you're others.
TR, yeah, and TRA is somebody who I've worked with previous to this as well. Um, and they were who I was familiar with, TRA, Technology Resource Advisors. Um, and so when we, when we got the three credits, I was happy to see that TRA came in where they did.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. This will come up again in the next meeting for vote. And then on to C, preliminary budget.
Yeah, I think what's most important here is to just see, uh, what sort of variables that we're dealing with here for the nineteen twenty budget. Of course, we do not have a state budget yet, um, but, but to just know, uh, the variables that we're working with, as you can kind of see in the chart for the revenues. And then why some of the expenditures are, are different, um, from, from, uh, last year or from this current year, looking ahead to next year. So I try to lay that out as, um, extensively as I, as, as maybe you'd like to read. Um, so again, what this preliminary budget does is it simply showcases that there is a framework in place, uh, that we have worked with our building principles for building budgets. Um, I, I break out the preliminary budget kind of by the categories that people, um, that there are others in charge of that area of the budget. So for example, building budgets, all comes from the principles. Co-curriculars is Dave Pentec. Buildings and grounds is Todd Iverson. Technology is, um, Todd Stacy and Chris Comp working on that. Teaching and learning is Lynn. Uh, the district then is, are these parts that, that really, um, in essence, I have, uh, the, the kind of the wherewithal to fill in those, um, pieces. And so that's how we break apart this preliminary budget into those categories and why they're, why they're like that. Um, you know, you're going to see, as we talked about last week, that this is a deficit budget due to diverting dollars to Fund Forty-One in order to take care of that roofing. So that's why you're seeing revenues around the twenty, it's really, it, it looks like it's down. It looks like we're losing revenue out of Fund Ten. But it's only because we're diverting it to Fund Forty-One. So that's why it looks like that and why it's a deficit budget. So again, the preliminary budget shows a framework that we're working within so that even though there's not an original budget passed until October, that starting July one is a new fiscal year and we need that, we need some sort of authority to say, yes, the board at least sees the fr- framework. And thus we can start spending in July for operations, buying supplies for the next school year, items like that. And so come August again, you'll see, uh, another reiteration of this budget. Uh, I always enjoy saying this, this budget is already wrong. I've already changed it since Thursday when I went into the packet. Because that's the pace at which we are moving right now with new hires, um, coming on or, or, or taking a look at or refining numbers as we go through these different processes. But it's a framework that showcases where in there. In August, you get the published budget, which will be in the paper and I'll present then the whole, um, show at, uh, the budget and annual hearing. And then again, in October, you'll finalize. So I can take any questions at this point. I don't know how much, how deep you want to dive in anything, but, um, I can answer any questions.
So you based it all on a flat, on it being flat, just because?
I, I based our revenue on a flat membership, meaning that I'm, the same amount of students, the same amount of residents last year as this year. Which over a three-year average actually increases our membership and increases our revenue limit. The categorical aid that we're all paying attention to in, in the governor's budget, that I have right now is a hundred and seventy-six dollars per pupil. Again, that comes from Evers saying a two hundred dollar increase, although we're supposed to go backwards by twenty-four dollars. So we don't really know what two hundred means yet, if it means an actual two hundred or if it means two hundred on top of going backwards twenty-four dollars. For special ed expenditures, that's been a big thing as far as how much you're going to get reimbursed from the state. That right now I have is flat. Um, if it goes to the thirty percent that everybody sees, um, it could be about a hundred thousand dollar swing in revenue.
So hopefully we just go up with, with.
That's how I budget right now. I, I budget pretty conservatively on the revenue side.
I mean, revenues would go up.
Yeah, the revenues would go up.
But I know budget.
Correct, correct.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So on to seven, items for future consideration. Okay, eight announcements. Any announcements? Okay, well, so, um, I have a couple then. It's Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, we have a lot of events going on around the district. So, um, you know, it, it's, it shouldn't be isolated one week, right? We appreciate our teachers. They, they're, they're an integral part of our community. They spend the most time with our students. So we're grateful to have them. Uh, thank you for, for being part of Whitnall's family. And hopefully we can, you know, do some things this week to make it fun and, and, and show our appreciation as a, as a district for them. So parents, if you see a teacher, make sure you say thank you this week. Um, Middle School Musical. I want to thank Ms. Anna Keen, all the rest of the staff, parents and students who made it possible. Um, I went all three nights. It was, uh, it was a lot of fun to see. It was pretty impressive. So, uh, it was a good time. Um, last meeting, Karen, you'd mentioned some inconsistencies with board meeting minutes. Uh, I want to thank you for bringing that to our attention. So I went back through all the meetings, going back to July of last year. And, uh, there are some inconsistencies with it, so thank you for pointing that out. Um, Kathy and I have already started working on that. Uh, she was at a, a, a training seminar last week. And so we're going to go through that, make sure that we're complying with legal counsel, best practices with that, get it in place moving forward. And then we can look at that, uh, consistent model in our board retreat that's coming up to see if there's any change we want to make. But at least for the, for the time being, we'll have something in place. So thank you for pointing that out. Uh, and then Board Retreat, and we keep saying we're going to have it, we're still working, hopefully, uh, the beginning of June. What we're trying to do this year, instead of having one long marathon retreat, uh, there are a couple of different topics we need to, to address. Whether it's continuous improvement or, or whatnot. So we're trying to break them out instead of like a three or four hour meeting where it could be a ninety-minute session. Uh, possibly two hours, maybe two to three different sessions, give us a little bit of break. We're trying to actually do it after a board meeting if at all possible. We'll work on making it a shorter agenda and try to maximize our time here. So, um, hopefully we'll have some information the next week or two on a specific date and then we'll get that added on. Okay, so if no other announcements, I'll take a motion to adjourn a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five. One C to discuss a staffing assignments.
So moved.
Okay, roll call. Nancy?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Karen? All right, thank you.